Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember Pappan is on the line and we'll probably show her video in a moment if you wanted to get started. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I do believe Councilmember Pappan's on the line and if you wanted to go ahead and get started, she will show her video in a moment.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, everybody, and welcome. It's 7:09 PM. Welcome to this regular Monday night meeting, January 3rd of the San Mateo City Council. I am calling this meeting to order at this time. I ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Gorthos?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Here.
Mayor Bonilla?
I'm here. Thank you very much. I'm going to now read, I'm now going to read the special information regarding our COVID orders. Due to health orders in place currently, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling by telephone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute yourself. These options are for public comment. They remain open and available until I close the public comment, period, after that specific item. Thank you very much. So, first items we have on the agenda tonight, we have representatives from HIP, I believe we have Lisa Nash, it looks like, going to make a presentation regarding their calendar. HIP, also known as the Human Investment Project. Thank you. Go ahead.
Over to Bruce Bean, the former board chair of HIP Housing.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to be here this evening. My name is Bruce Bean. I'm the former president of HIP Housing, and I'm just very excited to be here tonight on behalf of HIP Housing. I would like to thank the Honorable Rick Bonilla, Mayor of San Mateo, and all of the San Mateo Council members for their wonderful support over the years of HIP Housing and affordable housing in general. As a token of our appreciation and as a reminder of our partnership throughout the many years, I'd like to present the city council and the mayor with the 2022 HIP Housing Calendar, which we look forward to giving to you in person. So, this is our 50th year. Can you believe it? HIP Housing has been here in San Mateo for 50 years now, and we are very proud of the service that we have done for the county and for the city of San Mateo. With our unique affordable housing programs, we have been able to house over 1,200 people each year. Lisa?
And good evening again, councilmembers and Mayor Bonilla. My name is Lisi Diaz Nash. I am on the board of HIP Housing, and I am so excited to be here tonight. This unfortunately is not in person because it's one of the events that I love so much, presenting the calendar and sharing the children, but let us tell you a little bit about what HIP Housing has done with the home sharing program. 253 San Mateo residents contacted HIP Housing in 2021 alone for affordable housing, home sharing, and community resources to develop a program to meet their housing needs. 91 residents and 24 persons working in San Mateo, so this is a much broader net than just residents, applied to the home sharing program and were provided affordable housing resources, home sharing referrals, and connection to community resources. Four income-seeking residents were matched in a home sharing arrangement, as well as two home providers. Let's not forget that home sharing is also about helping people who need a little bit of help with their mortgage or their homes or their expenses, to bring someone into their home to balance things out. It's a win-win situation. The home seekers worked at Trader Joe's as a clerk, Uber, Lyft driver, and as a warehouse manager. Everyone is in need of housing. Their average income was $32,595, and on average, as a result of the home sharing program, they were able to keep their housing costs at 34% of their income. And that is what we target, but often not what we achieve. In addition, 95 San Mateo residents remain in their home sharing match made in a previous fiscal year. So, this is the ongoing impact that HIP Housing has on our community. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Bruce Bean, but I want to say in conclusion that HIP Housing houses more than 700 people in our properties that we own or manage throughout San Mateo County, including the eight properties in San Mateo, on Idaho, El Dorado, Delaware, Marina Vista, Cypress, and the two buildings of Rotary Haciendas and Rotary Floritas. Over to you, Bruce.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa. So, the HIP Housing Calendar is filled with information on HIP Housing and affordable housing programs and showcases what children have thought throughout San Mateo County. Children are asked to submit drawings of a home, of their home, along with a quote of what home means to them. This year, three of the 12 winners are specifically from the city of San Mateo, and they are selected for their wonderful creativity. So, I'd like to go through those very quickly with you. Just here we are with our first person, Kalia, from May, and she did a marvelous job with colors and creativity with her house. Our second person from San Mateo, from the city of San Mateo, is Nicholas in August, and I love his quote, "My house is strong in Kung-Fu. It protects me." So, I think that's just a wonderful quote, and I think we all feel that same way about our own homes. And then lastly, the third San Mateo contestant was Shima, and she has a wonderful creative September calendar piece. So, with that, I'd like to go back and just say that please help us share the word about programs, especially the HIP Housing Home Sharing Program, which helps match people who have space in their own homes to share with people who need an affordable place to live. For so many, home sharing is an amazing opportunity to rent rooms affordably. Lisa?
And as we all know better than most, with COVID here with us and going on, people are suffering in so many different ways, and our programs provide all sorts of ways of addressing their housing needs. And when people get housing, they get health, they get safety, they get security, they get a foundation for so much more. In addition to home sharing, HIP Housing has a self-sufficiency program that provides housing assistance and trauma-enforced case management services to low-income parents and emancipated foster youth, such an underserved part of our community, with or without children. During the fiscal year of 2021, 51 families representing 61 adults and 68 children were provided support through the self-sufficiency program. Six of the families were residing in San Mateo. So, whether in our city or broader San Mateo County, HIP Housing is making a difference, and we all need its support. Bruce?
So, we hope you will display our calendars proudly and continue to refer people to our programs. We also hope that the calendars serve as a reminder of how important housing is to everyone, especially our children. So, thank you. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year to you all.
And we are happy to give out as many calendars as you need to share with your constituents, to share with your neighbors, and we just want this to be a time of celebration because these kids did an amazing job, all of them the ones in the calendar and the ones who contributed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Bruce and Lisa. I just want to point out that in the last drawing there, we were looking at from Simena, who was in the second grade. Her quote is in Spanish at the bottom of her art. It says, "My house is safe. In my house, I have a lot of love." This is a great message. Thank both of you and thank HIP Housing for all the great work it has done here for half a century now. I have much gratitude for that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And the next item will be ceremonial. I'm going to read the proclamation and present it to retired Police Lieutenant Art Sanchez. And I believe Chief Barberini may make a few comments. I noticed that he is actually here on the meeting, and so I will start off by reading this resolution in honor of retired Lieutenant Art Sanchez. So, commending Lieutenant Art Sanchez for his 30 years of service with the San Mateo Police Department, spanning from October 1991 through December of 2021. Resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that whereas Lieutenant Art Sanchez has served the community of San Mateo with distinction and professionalism for 30 years, working tirelessly to preserve the safety and security of our community. And whereas, after serving four and a half years in the United States Marine Corps, Art joined the San Mateo Police Department in 1991. Initially hired as a police service aide, he became a reserve police officer in 1992, and in 1994 was hired as a police officer, becoming the only full-time Mexican-American officer at that time. And whereas, as an officer, Art compiled an impressive amount of experience and knowledge working in a variety of assignments, including patrol officer, neighborhood response team officer, special investigations bureau officer, SWAT sniper operator, field training officer, and detective. And whereas, in 1999, Art was awarded the Police Department's Distinguished Service Medal for saving the life of a San Mateo resident that suffered a severe head injury and cardiac arrest after falling off of a flight of stairs. Officer Sanchez administered CPR and first aid until medical personnel arrived. And whereas, Officer Sanchez once again recognized with the Best Arrest Award in 2001 for his role in efforts to investigate a gang-related shooting resulting in the positive identification and arrest of a dangerous criminal. And whereas, in 2006, Art was promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant with assignments including supervising a patrol team and the Special Investigations Bureau, and during his time supervising the Special Investigations Bureau, Art led his team to produce a truly impressive record of reducing narcotics trafficking, human trafficking, and other quality-of-life issues, resulting in Art and his team receiving the exclusive Chief Commendation Award from Chief Mannheim in 2006. And whereas, Art promoted to the rank of Police Lieutenant in 2012 and has served our community in that role for the past nine years, managing various patrol teams, the field training program, and the Crime Reduction Unit. And whereas, throughout his entire career, Art has always been willing to take the extra step to help his fellow officers and share his training, knowledge, and experience with all of the officers in the San Mateo Police Department. And whereas, as one of the finest SNPD police officers who has dedicated his time and life to public service, Art deserves the highest praise and recognition from his peers. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo does hereby confer upon Lieutenant Arthur Sanchez, retired, its highest commendation for the exemplary manner in which he has performed his duties as a member of the San Mateo Police Department, and further extends its sincere appreciation to his wife Penny and their children, Joshua, Jacob, Alise, Alec, and Alec, for their loving support of him, adopted this third day of January 2022, by Rick Bonilla, the mayor of the city of San Mateo, and the city councils. Thank you very much, Art, for all of your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all the city council for this very gracious honor. I'd just like to thank everybody. As mentioned, I was 17 years old when I joined the United States Marine Corps, 18 when I went in. Four and a half, four and a half years later, I got out and I was hired with the San Mateo Police Department and with the city of San Mateo, and it's just been an absolute honor to serve with the great professionals, past and present, of the San Mateo Police Department and the city employees, past and present, of the city of San Mateo. The city will always be my second home, and the employees my second, or my extended family, rather. And if I'm ever needed, I'm a phone call away. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Art. We truly appreciate all of your service.
Art, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
One of the best.
Do we have any other comments? Chief Barberini, would you like to add something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much. As evident by the proclamation, Art had a long and distinguished career, and his contributions to not only the department but the city are hard to measure, and he will be sorely, sorely missed. But his biggest impact that I found in my interactions and getting to know Art well are his impacts on other individuals, his coworkers, the people that work for him, members of the community. I can't tell you how many instances where I've received positive feedback from homeowners' associations, leaders in the community about Art's ability to not only be a good crime fighter and keep us safe, but also a problem solver, and really be, show a willingness to work with the community to solve those problems that impact the quality of life of our residents. And he's always been ready and willing to do that. But his impact on those within this department is evident and will last a long, long time. He's made so many individuals better. He's made me better. He's made our department better, and we will realize the benefits of Art's hard work and leadership for a long time. And I just want to take the opportunity to personally and publicly thank Art for everything he's done for the city, for the department, and frankly, for me personally. I treasure this opportunity to let people know how much he's meant to me in the last couple of years. His leadership and his ability to communicate, both internally and externally, has been invaluable, and I'm very, very sorry to see him go, but I'm also very, very happy for him. So, Art, thank you. I really appreciate everything you've done for all of us, and this one's personal to me because I've been able to do a lot of things here because of your hard work, and I really, really do appreciate that. So, good luck, bud.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, Art and Chief Barberini. I want to say, Art, that I like the look of your Christmas tree in the background there. Very nice. Okay. Thank both of you very much. We're going to move on now to the consent agenda. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number four, remote teleconference city council and commission meetings reauthorization. Item number five, library board appointment subcommittee recommendation. Item number six, fiscal year 2021-22 comprehensive fee schedule amendment. Item number seven, receipt and use of development impact fees and in-lu fees annual report. Item number eight, classification updates, Department of Public Works. Item number nine, citywide street rehabilitation agreement. Item number 10, citywide street reconstruction agreement. And item number 11, wastewater system supervisory control and data acquisitions system merger project contract change order.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Let me ask if any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item. Now would be the time to raise your hand. This is for consent calendar items only. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers, public speaker?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any hands raised for consent calendar item. I do want to note for the record that per item number five, we have one of the appointees present to be sworn in. We could take at the end of the consent calendar, Shaylona Wheeler.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. In that case, I would take a motion, if we have one, to approve the consent calendar.
To move.
And second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you. Yes.
And if, Ms. Wheeler, if you'd like to go ahead and turn on your video, we can do your ceremonial swearing in now. And I looked for Austin, and I did not see him on the call, so with the mayor's permission, I'll go ahead and swear in Shaylona.
Please do, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Shaylona.
So, Shaylona, if we could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. After the first "I" statement, please state your full name, okay? Okay, very good. I?
I.
Shaylona Wheeler?
Shaylona Wheeler.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of invasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
Discharge the duties that I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping up, Ms. Wheeler. We appreciate your service. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to public comments. This public comment is for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is listed to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
I do have one hand raised. If Robert Whitehair would like to go ahead and provide his comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to make these comments tonight. First of all, Happy New Year to all of you, and maybe we begin to see less of COVID and its impacts. I do have a feeling, however, that we will be dealing with it for some time to come, at least in some form. You heard tonight from HIP and their wonderful housing work. I'm here tonight to comment and ask for your consideration of three more very important housing issues. A city's rent registry helps track building code standards, ensures quality housing for tenants, provides a better understanding of the rents that our residents pay. Policymakers use the data from a rent registry to determine trends of rental housing supply needs. Advocates like me and others use the data to reach out to elected officials and other policymakers, asking for ordinances and laws that will make the lives of our renters better. Currently, some random vacancy data is available that is not very robust and would benefit from significant improvements and more data. For example, there's 2020 census data to be had showing vacancy numbers block by block, but unfortunately, that information soon becomes stale and will be of little use after only a short period. My second issue addresses the tenant eviction protections falling away in March. The city of San Mateo has done a great job working with the county to minimize evictions, but that effort needs to be ramped up as more and more people are impacted by COVID. In past city council meetings, a number of us appeared before you asking for specific actions to stop evictions. I ask that in your upcoming goal settings, sessions, you make eviction protections your number-one goal among all the other things that you're facing. I know the staff time had been a problem in the past with all the things you had on your plate, but I ask you find enough staff time to deal with it now and also address it in a very positive way in the goal-setting session. My third and last issue is the need for more very low and low-income housing so that we don't get into predicaments of rents being unaffordable and leading to evictions so those things no longer occur. The council is to be congratulated on Kukue Crossing and the other very strong steps you've taken to provide more affordable housing. Yet, as we all know, the REIT targets for very low income and low-income housing have not been met, and while 225 units of Kukue Crossing are a great start, it is not, in my opinion, nearly enough. So, I ask you in your upcoming session to make evictions number-one priority, but also that you deal with the issue of finding enough affordable housing, which I understand is going to require more funding from somebody, and I also require, ask that you recognize all this, the importance of stable housing in the context of human rights. Thank you for the time to speak tonight.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands raised.
Thank you very much. In that case, I'll close the public comment period and return to the regular calendar with the next item being item 12, mechanical and automated parking facilities, updated standards and specifications. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes. One moment, please. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Laura Richstone, and I am an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Today, I will be introducing a resolution for updated interim parking standards for mechanical and automated parking systems with a recommendation to approve these proposed So, what are mechanical and automated parking systems? In simple terms, they are mechanical systems that require less space and/or volume compared to traditional parking configurations by stocking and storing vehicles both vertically and horizontally. Due to their space-saving nature, these systems offer a way to reduce development costs that can often constrain a project's feasibility. And that brings us to why we're here today. These systems, mechanical and automated parking systems, are not explicitly addressed within the city's municipal code for standards and currently must meet the dimensional standards outlined in the city's standard drawings and specifications document for off-street parking, which is shown to the left. This document was originally adopted by resolution and was last updated in the mid-'80s and the early 2000s. Unfortunately, these specifications were developed with traditional street surface and garage parking lots in mind and did not anticipate or really envision alternative parking systems like mechanical and automated parking facilities. And adhering to the standards in this document has had the effects of either precluding a majority of these mechanical parking facilities or requiring costly modifications, which reduces the main benefit that these systems provide, which is to lower construction costs. So, recognizing this issue, the city initiated a code amendment process in 2018 and retained the services of a parking and design consulting firm to assist in establishing feasible standards for mechanical parking systems. This item was taken to the planning commission in 2018 and 2019, but due to other departmental priorities, staff was unable to complete the code amendment process. However, the effort was revised in mid-to-late 2021, and today's proposal, or today's proposed updates, I should say, to the city's standards, standard drawings and specifications are based on the work and research that was conducted in 2018 and 2019, and is needed to establish some minimum or minimal objective standards, both dimensional and performance, for these types of systems in light of various state bills such as SB 35 and the state's density bonus law, which permits developers to request development waivers and concessions that would allow these systems within multifamily residential developments. I would also like to take this moment to highlight that the proposed update I would also like to take this moment to highlight that the proposed updated standards before you today are intended to be interim in nature and that staff is working on a more comprehensive code amendment process for mechanical, or, oh yeah, for mechanical and automated parking systems that would be brought back to the council later this year in mid-to-late 2022. So these updated standards were brought to the Planning Commission on December 14, 2021, for consideration and recommendation, and the Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval of an amended resolution based on staff's recommendations, and these recommendations included changing all references from stall or platform dimensions to free and clear vehicle bay dimensions and allowing smaller vehicle bay dimensions at the discretion of the building official. Looking ahead to the larger, more comprehensive mechanical parking code amendment process slated for later this year, the Planning Commission also asked staff to explore, one, allowing these systems to satisfy required parking for all uses within all zoning districts, including single-family residential districts, and, two, they also wanted staff to explore, including objective standards, for when the building official can permit a reduced vehicle bay dimension. So that brings us to the resolution before you today. Based on public comments received and input from the Planning Commission, the following changes were incorporated into the proposed resolution. So staff retained changing all references from stall or platform size to free and clear vehicle bay dimensions. This change in language ensures that the three-dimensional storage area for vehicles is consistent across systems as platform types and lengths differ from manufacturer to manufacturer. Discretion, second item, this discretion by the building official to allow reduced vehicle bay dimensions was removed. The intent of this proposed resolution is to establish objective standards and allowing discretion by a public official would constitute a standard that is not objective. So discretion was removed from the proposed resolution. And the third and last change incorporated into the resolution before you today was to reduce the minimum height for where people enter and exit through vehicles from seven feet to six feet eight inches. The building code allows six-foot-eight minimum vertical clearance for exits and for areas with fixed ceiling fixtures, and reducing the height from seven feet to six-eight is, one, both in line with the building code, and, two, actually is achievable for a greater variety of these mechanical systems. So with that, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to update the city's standard drawing and specifications document for off-street parking to include standards for mechanical and automated off-street parking facilities. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available, so is the deputy director and director of CDD and my colleagues, Suelen Atkinson, a principal transportation planner with Public Works, were all available to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richstone, for your presentation. I bring it back down to the council for any questions we may have. Do I see any raised hands there? I don't believe I do. So if there are no questions, then I, since I don't have any either, I think we can go on to public comment.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised for this item.
Thank you very much. Then I close public comment. And I bring it back to the council for comments. Any members, raise your hand. They're asking, let me be clear, asking for a resolution to update these standard drawings and everything else described, they want a motion. Thank you. Eric, please go ahead.
I just want to say real quickly that I think staff's recommendations makes a lot of sense, and I think we should adopt this resolution.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I concur.
I concur as well, and I appreciate the sequencing of this item.
And Councilmember Gothols?
I second that motion.
Okay, and thirded too, okay. I want to say that I watched the meeting, I read all the material very carefully. By the way, the reduction of the head height from seven feet to six-foot-eight, six-foot-eight is the standard door opening height, so I have no problem with that. I think that everything is well thought through and planned. I appreciate that we'll be coming back after this interim action with a farther-reaching action that will study potentially uses within the R1 zone as well as other considerations. So I also favor this, and so if there's nothing else that needs to be said, I would appreciate a motion.
So moved. Second?
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you very much. Now, on to item 13, under Old Business, and it is regarding the pedestrian mall streetscape design agreement and appropriation. And I believe we have Kathy Kleinbaum to speak on this tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. Is everyone seeing my full presentation screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. So again, we are here to talk about pedestrian malls, probably for the 25th time in the last couple of years, but hopefully, this will be a happy and insightful presentation for you. So just as a reminder, starting back in June of 2020, the city council closed two full blocks of B Street. Initially, it was to create temporary public open space and outdoor dining due to COVID, but just this past October, we have made this street closure permanent. So I'm here tonight to talk about the process of transitioning from this temporary closure to something more longer-term in terms of its look and feel in our downtown. So before we really get into some of the design issues, I want to talk briefly about what's working and maybe what's not working so well with the current pedestrian malls. So, you know, these two block closures have created a notable increase in public open space, which has been enjoyed by pedestrian and bicyclists in the downtown. For sure, the expanded outdoor dining options have been appreciated by many in our community, including myself. It's created a very lively experience in the downtown. And most importantly, I would say that the cars have really adjusted to the traffic pattern for the two full street closures. So although we've had some issues with the block that had a singular lane closure, we haven't had any problems with the traffic patterns related to the full street closures on those two blocks. Some of the challenges that we've experienced are the fact that the two different blocks are really used quite unevenly. So the block between second and third is very active, almost every business on that block is using their space. However, the block between first and second, only a handful of the businesses have taken advantage of the street closure. And then, in addition to that, where the businesses aren't using the space, there aren't any public amenities to sort of fill in for that unused space. So we don't have any public seating areas or other uses, play areas, or anything like that. And then another challenge, which, you know, hopefully will transition away from, is the current restaurant installations with the platforms and the tents and the parkland walls. They don't allow the city to ever use the streets for public events, such as the September Nights on B, which we had hosted in years past, or any future event, festivals, farmers' markets, the like. Other challenges that we're experiencing relate to the current barricades that are in place. They were really intended to be temporary, and this also includes the traffic signage. They definitely are not standing up to the test of time all that well. We've talked about this before, but there are also issues with the street crown on B Street, creating uneven surfaces for dining, which is probably one of the biggest challenges we'll have to address, which also impacts ADA accessibility. And then loading and garbage service for the businesses is not really functioning as intended. So as originally designed in concept, the center open lane that pedestrian bicyclists use was supposed to be available to businesses for deliveries, for, you know, goods and supplies, and for garbage service during the morning hours. Unfortunately, I think it's a little bit too narrow, and moving the barricades has been too much of a challenge, so we see a lot of trucks at all hours of the day. In fact, the picture of the truck is taken from this morning, parking directly in front of the street closure and sometimes blocking traffic or disrupting traffic patterns to do business deliveries. And garbage service has also not been able to get through on the blocks. So we've talked about in past presentations that we are going to need to invest some money into making these streets more suitable in the long term. So there are two stages of improvements anticipated this short term. Although it's called short term, we don't know how long it'll be in place, but that includes replacing temporary barricades with things like either ballards or some sort of gate system, doing the proper traffic signal timing and signal adjustments for these streets, figuring out the loading and garbage access so the businesses can function properly, dealing with ADA accessibility, making sure it's open and accessible to all. And then, this is the most exciting part for me at least, is looking at what we can do at a low-cost spectrum to really make the streets look more lively and more beautiful, which I call tactical urbanisms. So these are things, looking at things like planters, painting, paint in the street, other furnishings that we can put in place. And then eventually, and we don't know when eventually would occur, we would do these long-term improvements, which would be raising the grade of the street to be flush with the sidewalk, doing all sorts of specialty pavers, permanent landscaping improvements. And unfortunately, those are in the multimillion-dollar realm, and we don't even have a cost estimate for that, but it's not something we have funding available for any time in the near future. So this is just my little Pinterest, Google board of some inspirations that I've seen on other closed streets all across the nation. It just gives you an idea of what I mean by these short-term improvements. These in no way indicate anything that's been designed for a street or that we have planned, but they just sort of give you the idea of these sort of uses of paint and temporary furnishings and planters and umbrellas that we would hope to achieve on these streets in the short term. And to get to that point, the city put out an RFP to hire a design consultant to help us come up with some design ideas and then also do the more practical, boring things like designing the traffic signal timing and the actual ballards and street closures. So through the RFP process, we've selected Community Design and Architecture, and they have a team which includes Willsey Ham as their civil engineering subconsultant and Fair and Peers for Traffic Engineering. The contract will be to achieve 100% construction documents, which means ready to go out and bid. The total contract amount is roughly $145,000. We need additional funds for Public Works staff time to review and comment on the engineering portion of it. And so this will require an appropriation from the general fund, fund balance, because we currently don't have any money budgeted for this purpose. As part of the design process, we will work really closely with the impacted business and property owners to make sure that we understand all the logistical challenges they're facing and come up with the most creative solutions to those challenges. In addition, we'll be engaging with the DSMA and other local stakeholders on some of the design options. When we initially develop some schematic designs and sort of different options for considerations, we will come to the city council for some feedback on those different options before we move forward with the full construction documents. One idea to include in this, on the pedestrian malls, is the idea of using them as the canvas for the proposed racial equity public art project. This is a project that was considered as part of the strategic plan for the city council this past year, but it has not been able to move forward because it has been challenging to identify a location for this public art project. So staff did bring the concept forward to the Civic Arts Committee that this, they could occur like on the pavement on the pedestrian malls, and the Civic Arts Committee was very supportive and excited about this design concept. So if the council supports this, this would be something where the current design contract would sort of identify the location, but the actual artwork would be determined through like a separate process involving the Civic Arts Committee and possibly the Diversity and Equity Task Force, which were literally in the process of launching this month. And the funding for the artwork, when it's implemented, would come from the Civic Arts Fund. And again, with the Pinterest board idea, these are just some images of how public art has been integrated onto streets. Again, none of these represent the actual art that would be selected for this project, but just to give you a sense of the flavor of what we're thinking about. And with that, I have three actions for council consideration tonight. One is to award the contract for design services to Community Design and Architecture to adopt the resolution to appropriate the funding needed for this contract, and then also to provide direction on the placement of the racial equity art project and whether you support putting it in the pedestrian malls. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy, for the presentation. I bring them back to the council now for any questions? Any questions? Please raise your hand or signal me.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hi, Kathy, thank you for the presentation. I had, I was wondering about the, combining the potential idea for a mural, a racial equity mural, and how that would fit into sort of like the two phases of the project? Did we put in a mural and then later are able to raise money for, you know, a more permanent streetscape upgrade? How, what's your vision in terms of like how, what the Phase Two of the racial equity mural would look like? Or how that would be preserved, or would that become like a roadblock?
So whatever we end up doing, if we do the racial equity art project as part of the project on the streets, anything we paint is probably honestly only going to last three to five years under the best-case circumstance. So it would definitely be something where we'd have to be aware and either dedicate resources and have plans to sort of maybe change out what art is represented on the street every so often. So definitely, as we're looking to transition to the long term, we can sort of consider other options for finding locations within the more permanent, long-term design. But it's definitely, anytime you put paint on the street, no matter what circumstance, it's not going to last forever.
Well, I really am excited about the idea of the racial equity artwork being more on display downtown, and I know that that was a sticking point in terms of finding a good location. So, you know, marrying these two ideas makes a lot of sense. I was also wondering, like, had the committee thought about making the artwork more sort of utilitarian? So it could be integrated with the furniture design or the, you know, the planters? Or, you know, is there a way to give it, you know, this investment more longevity than a three- to five-year timeline? And something that can actually be moved and continued to use after Phase Two is implemented?
I think that's something we can definitely consider in Phase Two. Like, if we have a specific design for art that we end up implementing in the first phase, the short-term phase, when we move to the long term, maybe the motif can be picked up and, like you said, incorporated in the street furniture. I think that would be part of the, probably the, design for the second phase, which we are not going to embark upon at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is about the scope of the ADA access design. That was something that kept on coming up from our businesses and also our community and residents, and I was just hoping that we could... our businesses and also our community and residents. Um and I was just hoping that we could help provide a little bit more detail about what's in store.
So there'll be a couple aspects to that. Um so you know, one will be making sure that there's adequate ADA parking. So looking at the parking that's been removed and identifying new locations for ADA parking spaces around these closed streets. There's another aspect of making sure that um like entry to the streets is preserved. So the that your access either to curb ramps or new curb ramps are created, especially maybe potentially mid-block to make it easy for there to be more fluid motion across the streets. And then another aspect, which we'll have to be really creative to figure out how to address is sort of identifying the sloping issues with the crown of the street and whether there is any sort of short-term solution that can be put in place to to mitigate that. It it definitely varies a little bit over the street and based on which side of the street, how severe of an issue it is. So that's definitely something we'll have to study in more detail as part of this contract.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Next. No other questions? Thank you. I have no questions myself, so we'll move along to public comment then. Madam Clerk.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, then I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for uh comments. I think that we should organize ourselves by first providing uh direction regarding the art. And then I think we need two motions. One to appropriate the money for the design contract and another one to uh move the money, I think, from the general fund to the fund that would support the design contract. Please go ahead.
Um through the mayor, I just want to say I believe you can do that through one motion.
Okay. I see a persona shake, uh nodding his. Thank you very much.
Yes, confirmed.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Um so you you're taking us, you're you're taking, you you want to go in in the no portions and you first wanted to start with the the artwork. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if you describe what you think about the artwork and then we can go to the motions and we'll be done.
Okay. Yeah, I I think that's a, I think it's a great idea. I mean, of course, it really depends on what what it ends up looking like, but I really like Councilmember Lee's um idea of of thinking maybe outside of the box, maybe not just something that you step on, but maybe something you can interact with. Um I I think that could be, I I I would like that to be considered as well. And and just in general, I'm I'm really excited about this moving forward. Um I was just there um not too long ago and and our downtown and it's really you know, we did the hard part by by making it permanent. Now it's it's like making it fulfill its potential and in and making it be what it can be for for our residents. And it's really excited that we're, exciting that we're moving this forward. In fact, when I was working on my priorities before uh before the 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 holidays, I was going to say, bring up something like this, like come up with a strategic plan so we can move it forward along. And then I saw the the agenda and I was really, I was like, okay, we don't have to do that. So thank you so much for all your work on this, Kathy.
And do you favor moving forward with the contract and?
Yes, yes.
Next.
I agree.
Okay, Joe, too.
Full support, yes.
Me too. I'm really excited about it.
Good. Well, then all I have to say is I agree. I think that the art, I appreciate Amos' comments regarding um making it a little bit more rather than something that's just here that people walk on. And I think after some time would start looking worn and perhaps not receive the kind of respect that I think it deserves. So um I hope we can look at variations of how we can do that. Um and with that said, I mean, I also support these uh the motion. So uh if somebody would like to make the motion and second that, we can have a vote.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Eric second. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. And now we move on to item next, which is item fourteen, and that is our COVID-19 update.
Thank you. Good evening, uh Mayor Bonilla, members of the council. I have a, just a brief COVID-19 update for you this evening. Um operationally, um the Omicron variant has has hit us. Um so so we are continuing to need to make operational adjustments. Um for the the small group of employees based predominantly predominantly at City Hall uh or at the Ofero Building uh across the parking lot. Uh folks were scheduled to return today on a more set schedule. Uh last week I postponed that until at least February the seventh. Uh we're planning on continuing uh the remote council meetings, including having our January twenty ninth strategic planning workshop held remotely. Uh police department has been uh has been impacted uh by positive cases uh very recently over the past few weeks. Um and we're having to adjust operations a little bit over there, including um moving some spec, putting some specialty assignments uh on pause to, in order to shift those resources into patrol. Uh Public Works has been kind of hit twice, both from positive cases and from the weather. I know we've got a lot of rain, which has been positive, but it's it's definitely um caused a a number of issues that that we've had to to deal with. And uh so right now the focus is on continuing, uh working on the weather-related issues uh with preventive maintenance being a lower priority right now. And hopefully um over the next few weeks or so, we can get caught up on that. Um last year, from uh January first to September thirtieth, uh the state had employers provide COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave benefits. Uh we extended it um through the end of December, and that was eighty hours uh available for employees to either get vaccinated, get tested, be in quarantine or be in isolation. And um of our employee base, we had a hundred and two employees who have used an average of twenty-three hours of this leave. Uh the plan right now, uh because of the the continued nature of the pandemic, is to allow employees to to continue to utilize any unused through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. As far as council confirmation goes, um I'm requesting tonight uh confirmation of the continuing need for the local emergency proclamation. Um that's required every sixty days, so that would get us through the end of February. Um and this uh emergency proclamation provides continued flexibility for us uh with health orders obviously still in effect and our internal cases increasing. I'd also like to get council confirmation for the actions that are taken in response to the emergency proclamation. And that would be the modifications to City Hall, police and public works operations, as well as the utilization of special COVID-19 leave uh through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, questions? It looks like we have no questions. I don't have any. So uh with that, we'll move on to the public comment, please.
Uh Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
No public comment. I'll close the public comment. And bring back to the council for uh uh comments. Seeing none, uh would we uh offer confirmation for the city manager's actions? On two items, one is the emergency order extension and the actions taken.
Uh yes, that's correct. You may do so by motion.
Yes. Have a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're off to item fifteen, which is city council appointments to external agencies and liaison roles. And I think we have Sue Ellen Atkinson. Transportation planner. Is that correct?
Uh there's actually um not a presentation as the mayor has reviewed the list and if there's anything special you wanted to say about it, they could um entertain discussion, uh direct us to make any changes and we can bring it back at the January eighteenth meeting. Or we could actually pass it tonight for um with any changes noted.
Thank you very much, uh Madam Clerk. So you, I hope, have all had a chance to look at the uh the appointments list at it as it's uh filled out so far with what um um input we have received from council members. Is there anything that anybody would like to uh discuss regarding assignments? Raise your hand or signal. I see. Oh, I see Councilmember Gothos.
I'll just say, um I I was happy with how it turned out. Um obviously, Rick, as usual, Mr. Mayor, you're uh shouldering a heavy burden and we appreciate all those meetings that you go to and all the places where you represent us. Thank you for that. Um and I I saw that Diane and I will be taking up the uh San Mateo Consolidated Fire again. Uh and I also saw that uh Amorenz and Diane are taking on the um SFO roundtable. I would just volunteer myself to be the second alternate for the SFO roundtable. If there's a meeting where neither of you can make it, please give me a call. I'm happy to fill in.
Thank you very much, Joe. Um I I would like to add that I don't do, you know, I mean, though it may look like I do a lot. Um nobody here does anything alone. The entire council works together. We all take our part and take our assignments and carry the city uh forth where our our voice needs to be heard and bring back the messages that we need to deal with. Um anybody else have any other comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
I I just wanted to echo uh Councilmember Bonilla's uh gratitude towards you um taking on a disproportionate uh burden as as usual. And I also just wanted to thank you for for this this process and how quickly it turned out. When I was looking through, um you know, normally you you kind of think, oh, well, I didn't get that, but I got this, I got that. But I I don't know how it fared with everybody else, but I thought you did outstanding job of 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 at least allocating what I what I was looking for. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Any other thinking? Any expression of, okay, in that case, um
I'll move to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second. Great job, Rick. We we can approve it tonight.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Second, the Deputy Mayor's motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, the only thing that I heard as addition is we'll have a second alternate and Joe Gothos on the SFO roundtable. Okay, so uh Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the final item tonight, which is reports and announcements. Uh let me first ask if staff has anything they want to bring for us tonight? City attorney, city manager, IT director, what's new in uh IT?
All is well, all is well.
That's what we like, okay? As long as we're secure. Thank you very much. Okay, then council members, what are your uh reports or, Joe, please go ahead.
Uh so Hundred and First, which we've had a relationship with for over fifty years, is uh celebrating their annual ball uh the end of the month. So January twenty, the Friday, the twenty
Twenty eighth. Yeah.
Friday, the twenty eighth is their annual ball. It will be held in Kentucky, which is just uh just off the the base there at um Fort Campbell. And uh as usual, Linda Patterson has bought a table and I believe uh our fearless clerk is making arrangements. I would ask that for those who are available and can go, that we uh put this on our next meeting's agenda to approve any travel arrangements for um members of the city or staff or council members who who are able to make it out there to represent the city of San Mateo. This relationship has gone on for so long. They care so much about us. They have honored us multiple times having been out there. I know how special it is. Um uh Patrice was out there last time. Um uh uh Councilmember Fiskow was out there. It it's a special relationship that we need to hold on to. They care deeply for us. They have a tremendous amount of gratitude for how thankful we were when they came back from Vietnam. And as Patrice has pointed out to me a number of times, we're losing our Vietnam veterans every day. Uh every day we we lose uh another Vietnam veteran. And uh really, that's where our relationship with them uh was forged. So um it would be great if we could have representation and if we could add that to the council agenda for our next meeting, uh I would appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gothos. Uh I would uh be in support of that. Anybody else?
I'm happy to add it as well.
Okay, I see nodding heads and affirmations. So thank you very much, Joe. Um anybody else?
Uh Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would just like to, um, because we haven't, I don't know that we've met since it happened, but um our city put on a winter wonderland in Central Park. And um at the same time, they had the winter dance performance uh outside there as well. And it was a huge smashing success. So I would just like to compliment all of the staff that played a key role in putting it together. Um it was just amazing, absolutely amazing, with with fake snow included and and a bouncy house that was like a toboggan thing. I mean, it was really, really wonderful. So thank you so much to the staff. I think it was a real uh community bonding uh experience. And in this time of COVID, it was safe because it was outside. So I really appreciate all the effort that went into it and congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you very much for mentioning that, Councilmember Pappen. Okay, if nobody else has anything else, I have one thing that I would like to actually ask the council to consider. Um there is a group of uh transit supporters who are working on something, which is the Fair Integration Task Force. They're looking to create um uh some kind of working relationship between, I think, the twenty-seven different mass transit organizations that surround the bay to bring about integrated fares, integrated schedules, uh make it easier, uh more affordable, more equitable for those with lower rate cuts, one way to pay to get all the way around the bay. They're asking, they first asked me for my support, which I did give them my personal support, and I'm actually listed on the letter in support of this action. But also they were hoping they could use the city's logo. Uh I'm going to show this. They have a bunch of other, I don't know, it's a bit hard to read, isn't it? Okay, I'll have to unblur to do that. Anyway, they have other cities, including San Jose, Fremont, El Cerrito. They have organizations, everything from Peninsula Young Democrats to East Bay Transit Riders. You name it. I think I see like thirty different entities here who are signed on. We had the mayor of Emeryville, I believe. Anyway.
Is this the kind of organization that could lobby San Francisco for universal platform heights? Is that one of the things that we could do with this organization?
I I I think anything's possible here, Joe. But what they're flooding on is already a broad platform. It's, I think, a loading platform where uh they want to get more people on more reasonably. And all they want to know is if they can use our logo. Uh I worked with uh um our city manager Drew Corbett uh in talking about offering my own personal support uh as the mayor, but not the city council for this. And I'm asking the council if we can give them authorization to use our logo. Um I'd be happy to forward the information I had to everybody if you would like to see it. And then we could uh, I guess, make a decision about it at the next meeting. Unless we choose to try and go some alternate route.
I need to know a little bit more about it, but I I appreciate all of the things that you've mentioned are lofty goals and and important. Um but I I'm always hesitant to give somebody our logo without knowing
Right.
what uh maybe who the organizations are that are not aligned with this. But uh that's how, they they all sound like lofty goals.
Yeah, so I'd be happy to forward this to everybody. Yeah, and uh I just want to know if people are interested in bringing it back at the next meeting for discussion.
I'm interested.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, good. It looks like your buddy's in favor. All right, with that, then, I guess, uh since I see no other business before the city council, yes, Joe?
I just want to comment that if you look behind Diane, it it really appears that a lot of people have not returned. it, it really appears that a lot of people have not returned their books. I see empty shelves and I just want to make sure.
Did you check those books?
I want to make sure that we're not going to find those people. Just encourage them to bring those books back when they're done with them.
Thank you very much. What's our markup on those books anyway? Okay, well, thank you all very much. We've had a great meeting. And with nothing more to say, I will adjourn right now at 8:19 PM.
If I may quickly suggest, instead of sending information to the other council members, perhaps you could send that information to staff and we can get it appropriately disseminated.
Certainly. Good suggestion. Thank you very much. That's why we got you, Prasanna. Okay, good. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.